I'm Eli Nathan, I'm a member of the Washtenaw County Democratic Party Programs Committee. I will start the meeting with a short land acknowledgement. Washtenaw County occupies the ancestral, traditional, and contemporary lands of the Inishineback, of the Three Fires Confederacy, the Ottawa, Ojibwa, and the Potawatomi. The Washtenaw County Democratic Party recognizes historic indigenous communities in Michigan and those who were forcibly removed from their homelands. Washtenaw County occupies lands ceded in the 1807 Treaty of Detroit. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm indigenous history and experiences. I have just a few words before I turn this over to the moderator. Although this has been sponsored by the Washtenaw County Democratic Party, a partisan organization, this is a non-partisan race, and we invited all the candidates to participate. We didn't vet as to political affiliation. The meeting is open to the public, and the video that we posted online tonight or tomorrow will also be available to everyone. I would like to ask during the meeting that you keep the mic, your mic off if you're not speaking, because there is a tendency for an echo to develop. And I guess if you're not speaking, perhaps also keep off the video. That also reduces the amount of information that has to be transmitted. I'd like to introduce two key individuals in this who'll be helping in this event. First is Evan Mylan, who'll be the timekeeper. Evan has a bell. Evan, can you just demonstrate, this is the sound you hear when there are 30 seconds left? This is the sound you hear when the time is up. Thank you. And maybe stop the echo, Evan, after you ping that. The moderator is Jason Gummanek. He is a recently retired social studies teacher at Celine High School, knows the district quite well, and with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to him. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Eli. Thank you, Evan, and thank you for all the candidates that are here tonight. So tonight, we will hear from six of the seven candidates running for Celine's school board. As you all know, school board members are elected positions and make decisions on things like who to hire as superintendent, they approve the budget for each fiscal year, and they approve policies that are going to govern the district for years to come. So what I'd like to do right now is take a couple of minutes and just introduce the candidates. Want to make sure our audio is working, and so when I introduce, when I introduce you, all you need to say is hello, and then after we hear everyone's name and a hello, I'll go through additional procedures. So our candidates that are with us tonight are Sherri Burnett. Hello, Sherri.
Hello.
Darcie, can you hear me okay?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah. So, welcome, Darcie. Susan Eastep. Brad Gerby.
Hi, folks.
Jennifer Stebbin.
Hi, everybody.
And Kelly Van Single.
Yes, hi. It's nice to see you all.
Thank you. Jason Tzides was not able to join us, and he is the seventh candidate who is running for, in the school board election this year. So how this is going to work is that each of the candidates will have an opportunity for an opening statement. They will have two minutes to answer. They will tell us a little bit about themselves, why they're running for the position on the Board of, Celine Board of Education, and what will be their priorities as a member of the school board. We'll do that in just a moment. I will then pose a few questions to each of the, to the candidates, and we will stagger the order. So for the opening statement, we're going to go in alphabetical order, starting with Sherri Burnett, then Darcie Burwick, Susan Eastep, and so on. Okay? With each subsequent question, we will go down the line. So the second question, that would start with Darcie Burwick, Susan Eastep, and so on. Does that all make sense? So you kind of have a sense of when this is going, how this is going? And so after we hear responses, after we hear responses from several questions, members of the community who are joining us in the Zoom world will have an opportunity to ask questions. You know, just a reminder to all those members of the community who seek to ask questions, the candidates are the ones that are here to give the speeches tonight, so please ask questions. And so we will continue with some questions, so we get a variety of questions answered to satisfy members of the community. I then may have some more questions, and we will conclude with each candidate having an opportunity to deliver a closing statement. Just to reiterate what Eli was speaking about a few moments ago, Evan is our timekeeper here tonight, and so you have two minutes to answer each question. With 30 seconds left, he will ring a single bell. Evan, maybe we can hear that one more time? Okay? And then at the end of your two minutes, we'll hear a double bell. Perfect. Did everybody hear that? We're good? Great. And if you're still talking after two minutes, I'll give you an opportunity to finish your sentence, and then I might say, hey, we, we need to wrap it up here. Okay? I don't want to have to mute anyone. You know, I wish I could have done that in the classroom at times, but that's a whole, that's a discussion for another time. So with that, I think we can get started. Does anyone have any questions before we get started, or are we crystal clear? All right, well, with that silence, we can get started. Sherri, the first, you're the first candidate that we're going to hear, hear from, and this is an opening statement. Tell us a bit about yourself and why you're running for a position on the Celine Board of Education, and what will be your priorities? You have two minutes.
Everybody, my name is Sherri Barnett. My husband and I have lived in Washtenaw County for over 26 years. My daughter is preparing to start her senior year at Central Michigan, and my son will be starting his senior year at Celine High School next week. I've been a professional at the University of Michigan for over 34 years. Throughout those 34 years, I've served in both clinical and leadership roles, including the Respiratory Care Clinical Specialist of the Trauma Burn ICU, manager of a clinical research project management and quality data monitoring unit, and assistant manager director of a clinical and translational research, education, mentoring, and career development unit for the Michigan Institute for Clinical and Health Research. Currently, I'm serving in the role as program manager for the Clinical and Translational Research Program at U of M, Section of Thoracic Surgery. I moved into this role 11 years ago to work with faculty to build a section-based clinical research program. And today, it boasts a robust portfolio of basic science, clinical research, and outcomes-based research. We also have multiple staff, and then numerous internship opportunities for undergraduate, graduate doctoral students, and postdoctoral research fellowships. I chose to run for school board at Celine because working with students and building educational experiences and assessing outcomes and value-added or impactful work is something I've built my career around and I have a passion for. I feel my educational experience could translate well into making positive changes and enhancements in the district, and I believe this is a good time to reassess many of the district policies and practices and just verify that we're serving the community to the best of our abilities, being good stewards of the, of the budget, and then exploring innovative ways to deliver education that will prepare the next generation of clinical thinkers.
Thank you. Darcie Burwick.
Hi, my name is Darcie Burwick, and I'm a mom of two Celine alum myself. My daughter is entering her senior year at MSU, and my son is now officially a Husky at Michigan Tech. So I grew up in a family who always valued public service. I began volunteering for Celine area schools in 2008 when my daughter started kindergarten at Houghton Elementary, and I've continued that for the past 16 years. I've been a PTA, PTO board member for the last 12 years in the elementary, middle, and high schools. I've always been a classroom volunteer, and I've worked to support building programs like Reading Plus JA and the Scholastic Book Fair. In 2021, I was part of the Strategic Framework Committee that was established to inform both our district and school improvement plans, and I continue to volunteer for student enrichment organizations like Science Lypiad, and I am currently on the board of the newer nonprofit, Celine STEM Boosters. As my volunteer days were waning, I chose to continue working in education by becoming a substitute teacher. I've enjoyed teaching at Pleasant Ridge and at the middle and high schools. I've also spent a lot of time subbing as a teacher and teacher assistant, or commonly known as a parapro, for the WISD, which reignited my passion for special education. As a trustee, I will continue to roll up my sleeves to prioritize successes for students, staff, and families. My priorities are ensuring a safe, secure, and welcoming educational environment, improving our students' successes along all metrics, including academic, athletic, extracurricular, and social and emotional, attracting and retaining excellent teachers with competitive wages and a balanced work-home life, providing supports for struggling students, seeking and engaging with student, teacher, admin, and family voices, all while maintaining a fiscally responsible budget. Dedicated to the Celine area schools, and I will work diligently on their behalf so that our district continues to remain one of the very best in the state of Michigan.
Thank you. Susan Eastep.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me? All right. My name is Susan Eastep. I am a current Board of Education trustee in Celine area schools. I am serving the last year of my six-year term, and I'm running for reelection. I have three children in the district, two in elementary school, and one starting high school. So I'm totally invested in the schools for a really long time, and hopefully will bring maybe perspectives with the lower levels age groups than, than others. I have my master's degree in higher education and student affairs from Eastern Michigan University, and my bachelor's from Virginia Tech. My most recent position was as program manager at the University of Michigan Dearborn, working in Student Affairs Office for Student Life and Center for Social Justice and Inclusion. I've facilitated service learning courses, student leadership programs. I'm really student-focused, and I worked with non-traditional first-generation college students. And so as, as a first-generation student myself, was, oh, that was one ring. Okay. So I'm actively involved in the Michigan Association for School Boards. I served on one of their committees at the state level. I, I'm the first openly LGBTQ board member to be elected to Celine area schools, and I use my voice for students who are LGBTQ students of color, students with disabilities. And let me speak. I think, I don't know if I'm done yet, sorry. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Brad Gerby.
Good evening. Well, I'm Brad Gerby, and I've had the fortune of serving the Celine community as school board trustee for the past four years. I'm a science teacher of biology, chemistry, anatomy, and forensic science for the Manchester Community Schools, where I've been a dedicated and loyal employee for the past 20 years. I live in Northview subdivision of Celine with my wife Jessica, who's a critical care medical ICU nurse, and we have Graham, a 16-year-old junior at Celine High School, and Bryce, a 13-year-old eighth grader at SMS Celine Middle School. In my time as a board member, I've been given the trust of our board team as the treasurer and the finance chair, a position I have held for the past three years. In those three years, we have managed to establish the largest fund balance that Celine has had in a very long time, and we have done what a lot of what I would call right sizing, that is to address our current structural needs as a school district, and this work is ongoing. I also believe in three years that I've established myself as a trustworthy teammate and colleague, and that I've been able to provide the perspective of a boots-on-the-ground teacher to the board. I think it's important to have a teacher or a support personnel individual on the board, and I'm glad to have filled that role along with my friend and colleague Jenny Miller. I also believe I am a steady influence for our board team and someone who desires to listen willingly to do my best for kids. The students are everything, and that's why I serve in this capacity. I believe that there is more work to do, primarily related to the bond of 2022, and we will have potential important business items, such as if we can't talk our current superintendent into retiring at the end of his contract, then we're going to be in the market. For those reasons and others, I am asking for the continued support of the Celine community, and if you want to learn more about what I believe in after this forum, I invite you to visit www.voggerby.com. Thank you. And I've also posted the answers to almost every question from this forum there for tonight. So thank you, thank you, Celine.
Thank you. Jennifer Stebbin.
Hi, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me okay. My name is Jennifer Stebbin. I'm the current vice president of the Celine Area Schools Board of Education. Go Hornets! I have been on the board for six years, so Susan and I are actually the last two six-year terms on the board. I have enjoyed professional development with the Michigan Association of School Boards and currently hold a Level 3 Award of Distinction for the classes that I have taken over the past six years. I believe in lifelong learning. I work at the University of Michigan at the Michigan Ross School of Business. I'm the managing director for custom and executive education, and what that means is I partner with global, large companies worldwide to upscale their C-suites and their next-level leaders, as well as their high-performing emerging leaders. So I get to manage a faculty teaching team at one of the best business schools in the world. I'm biased, I'm an alum of Michigan as well, and work with our program management and delivery teams, finance and marketing teams, to ensure that we're delivering the best experience. Through that, I have a lot of curriculum design experience. Within Celine, I've been volunteering for over 10 years, starting off at Pleasant Ridge and was president of the PTA for two years. Also, long-term supporter and volunteer with the Foundation for Celine Area Schools, with the Chad Tough Foundation. I have taught junior achievement for years, and I have a family here in Celine, my husband and our twins at Celine High School. So I'm always at the track. We're a Celine-running family and a Celine-cheer family, and we have two rescue doggos that I love very much that live here as well. My priorities are really learning, love, and leadership. I have a very, very clear understanding of what this role is and what this role is not. I provide calm, empathetic leadership, and part, was that one or two?
That was, that was the second bell.
Okay, sorry about that. Boy, that goes quickly.
Thank you, well, thank you very much. Kelly Van Single.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kelly Van Single. I'm a lifelong resident of Washtenaw County, having been born in Ann Arbor. I'm a graduate of Huron High School. I also have attended Calvin College and now also Calvin University, as well as Bowling Green University in Bowling Green State in Ohio. I've lived in the Celine School District since 2013, and prior to that, we were in Ann Arbor Public Schools. We are an autism family. I have two daughters, both young adults, who are living with autism, and they really are my purpose and passion for being involved in education, especially special education, but, but all education. Because when it comes to curriculum, there's one curriculum, the gen ed curriculum, and from that, we adapt and modify for our learners with differences. And I would say three things that really are a passion of mine that I would bring to my public service as a board of ed trustee, and that is diversity, equity, and inclusion, of course, but also extending inclusion into belonging. I really feel belonging and being a part of a community is even a bigger extension of DEI work, especially for students with disabilities and differences. I also have a Master's of Education in Literacy and Inclusion from Calvin University, and the purpose for doing that is really more from an advocacy standpoint to help with professional development, parent advocacy, teacher advocacy, about teaching literacy skills to everybody, but especially to those who are very complex learners, and making the assumption that anybody can learn to read and write. And given the fact that in our country, 70% and upwards of adults are at a third-grade reading level or less, I believe literacy is very important for, for all learners across the lifespan. I also really believe in accessible instruction, and although the board is primarily, primarily their duty is supervising the superintendent, I have a passion for accessible curriculum as well, especially looking at universal design for learning and how we can use that to benefit all learners to making, learning accessible for them.
Thank you very much, Kelly Van Single. So we have proceeded very smoothly through that first question, and so you see how this is going to go. I'm going to have a couple of questions from here, and we're going to start with Darcie Burwick with the next question. The next question states, "Like many other districts in the area, Celine has seen dropping student enrollment in recent years. While the state has recently been helpful in providing more funding, this may not last, and Celine area schools may need to find ways to cut spending or raise revenue to achieve the goal of a balanced budget. State law prevents school districts from imposing local taxes to raise funds for operating expenses. As a school board member, what would be your recommendation of spending areas to cut or ways to raise revenue if the need arises?" And again, we will start with Darcie.
Thank you. And two minutes, it's definitely not enough time to answer those questions, so I want to start by telling you where I wouldn't make cuts. Teachers and staff, their working environment is our students' learning environment. We parents want smaller classroom sizes, and we want experienced teachers who understand our Celine rigor. We get great teachers when we offer them competitive wages, good healthcare, and a healthy work-life balance. We retain them and we respect them for the professionals that they are. And while the school district is always looking for ways to improve, with an almost 94% pass rate on our AP exams this spring, our educators are doing a lot of things right. For the rest, where possible, I would encourage a superintendent to continue forecasting enrollment numbers so that we naturally adjust our staffing to coincide with that enrollment, or it's called right sizing. None of us want a repeat of 2010. We need to continue long-term energy-saving investments, both recent bonds invested in energy-saving improvements with HVAC, lighting, and solar roofing. Additionally, we've received rebates for those three electric buses and preparing for more as we build the new transportation centers. We must continue to partner with our local organizations who support our students, Community Ed, which has the Celine New Sun Liberty Club, PTA's PTOs, Foundation for Celine Area Schools, all of our boosters, Celine Area Social Services, our library. Oh, I'm really going over time here. We could look at potentially consolidating services with the cities and townships. If we're looking to generate additional income, we could look at increasing programming or rental fees to third parties. And if necessary, can always reexamine settlement properties, like the one that's up at the corner of Michigan Avenue Industrial. Thank you.
Thank you, Darcie.
Hi. I just wanted to spend some time real quick to list my priorities, because I didn't get, get into that, just in case it doesn't come up. I'm sure it will. But equity and inclusion, focusing on bullying and hate speech, which I have been over the years. We still continue to have issues. Student mental health, staff recruitment and retention, and keeping public education public. So I, sorry. So this year, the budget from Lansing was allocated a little differently. So I don't want to go into like details, but pretty much are, we had a 442 increase per student. So this is an increase of over $2 million, and this is positive. It goes into like teacher retirement, and I'm sure Brad can expand on all of this. There's treasure, treasure. But you know, it's, we, we didn't receive funding, as in the past, with the mental health and safety for our students. And I know Michigan Department of Education recently put out something that they, you know, want to, to build some programs to kind of make up for that. So it's important when making decisions about cutting spending and raising revenue that we invite the community, having, you know, teachers, students, and definitely the staff administrators in on that conversation. We've got alignment, align it with our core values, strategic plan, and make sure we gather data and make the best decisions that we can.
Thank you, Susan. Brad.
All righty. Well, first off, I want to say that I think we do an outstanding job with the money that we are given by the state in local tax dollars. We have an outstanding assistant superintendent, a finance brand, Owesley, and we have excellent relationships with our bargaining units. We hire awesome and incredible people, and we are competitive for their talent, and we have competitive salaries and contracts, which I think our staff deserves. Because of the outstanding relationship we have, I'll answer the question this way. I think that the attrition model that we've established this past year is the best way to maintain budget solvency. It wasn't perfect, but we were able this year to support, with the support of our various teams, to right-size to the tune of $1 million. So that puts us on strong footing going forward. For me, cuts means people, it means programs. These things are important to me and to Celine families, and I don't want to just make cuts. Now, I'm not going to say that like if we had to, to do that, and we were in a terribly difficult, you know, situation, there was an unexpected cut for pupil funding, foundation allowance, et cetera, we'd have to then, you know, I'd ask the superintendent to put together a team of diverse roles, and I'd ask them to make recommendations. And it's not appropriate for me as a board member to choose the areas to cut that I want, right? Like, I would want those most familiar with students and school and family needs to make those recommendations, because that's our professionals' job. While I, while I'm on it, though, I will advocate for a couple of things before my time is up. Number one, we need to stay on our state representatives and keep advocating for category funding in a few areas. SEL, literacy, and safety. I think these areas are funded well currently, and I hope they'll continue to remain a priority of the governor or elected leaders. And so as finance leader, I'd advocate for, for those things, and I would continue to do that from the board table. And I would invite you to, I have a kind of a creative idea about a dream of mine, if you will, to advocate for $0 cost of attendance, but it's kind of a dream that would require donors, and because kids matter to me.
You can wrap it up.
Yep, so we're good, and moving on.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Hi, thank you. So first of all, the last six years, I've spent five years of that on the Finance Committee, one of the two major committees on the Board of Education. So I understand and have a strong commitment to corporate and district fiscal responsibility. A lot of times, when, when folks want to come to board meetings and participate as community stakeholders and taxpayers, you know, they, they have plenty to say on the, on the agendas at hand and on the policy committee, but the Finance Committee is, is where a lot of really important decisions are made. So would always encourage everyone to look at that as well. And while I'm there, I'm just going to thank voters for the recent bond. That is a blessing for us in our school district, so thank you very much. I have, I have supported the savings so far through attrition. I do want to formally acknowledge the lift for the staff when there is transitions between the grades that they might be teaching or the buildings that they're teaching in. That is challenging, and I thank you for those who, who are doing that. But layoffs are an absolute last resort for me. Similarly, I think it was Darcie that mentioned this. There are a few things that are just not on the table. They are absolute last resorts for me as well. I'm going to be very, continue to be very protective of the great opportunities that we have for our students, the number of classes and the classes that have in our buildings, athletics, clubs, music, art, drama, it's so important. And I have a fundraising background. So before the pandemic, when we were on the Finance Committee pre-pandemic, I was talking about revenue generation, raised it again at the board table when Dr. Ryan Rowe was there the other day. I was talking about revenue generation, raised it again at the board table when Dr. Ryan Rowe was there the other day with our wonderful SWWC Career and Technical Trades Consortium. How can we operationalize those wonderful classes and opportunities for professional development that our staff are doing? Monetize that for them and offer that as a revenue generator in our school district. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Kelly.
Yes, I think what is really helpful is to keep an open mind and look at all of your options for spending. But also continually utilizing and maximizing any of your bond monies and grants that can be used. For instance, we have our CARES budget, we have the Inflation Reduction Act. We also recently got three electric buses via creative thinking with a grant. I think another thing to do is to look internally for creative innovation and collaboration with your local community and even with your students. Look for ways for students in your vocational programs or trades programs to collaborate on green solutions or cost-saving solutions that can help district programming still thrive. In terms of possible cuts, I would say we always have to protect our teaching staff. They are the ones on the ground doing the frontline work every day of educating our students. So I would always work to protect them in the budget.
Thank you, Kelly. Sherry.
Well, before recommending areas of spending to cut or ways to improve revenue, I would need to get a more clear and accurate picture of the state of the district. So if I were elected to this role, I would want to assess the enrollment numbers thoroughly and assess factors leading to enrollment trends. So, you know, we have heard, why, why is there declines in enrollment? There's a low birth rate. But you know, if you if you pull up the live birth rates for the state of Michigan, you know, we start to see declines in two thousand thirteen. We increased in fourteen, decline again in seventeen eighteen, increase again in nineteen, and then of course with COVID, we had the eight point five percent decrease in live births in twenty twenty. But we're increasing again in twenty-one and twenty-two. You know, so based on this data, we should really only be seeing a decrease in student enrollment due to compounding decreases in birth rates in the lower elementary levels. However, when assessing SAS numbers, K to twelve, we're seeing substantial declines in sixth grade and ninth grade. And those, you know, in theory would be the grades that we have some influx of students, local students that were in private schools previously. So if we look at twenty-three and twenty-four for last year, even with an increased number of school of choice students that were admitted, we still saw a decrease in sixth and ninth grade by six and a half percent and six point one respectively. So happened to these students in sixth and ninth grade, they weren't unborn because of a low birth rate. So my aim, if I were elected to the school board, would be to do a needs assessment and determine the factors that are leading to declining enrollment. I would assess the extent to which school of choice is impacting our enrollment. After that, I would work with survey and qualitative researchers to create an interview tool to seek information from those families who've left the district and explore factors that are leading to these decisions. Because without this work being done first, any recommendation would really be
Thank you very much, Sherry. That takes us to the end of our second question. And we heard from Darcy. First on that question, we're going to move on to Susan. And the next question deals with leadership. And Superintendent Stephen Lodge has admirably served the district for many years. He is three years into a five-year contract. Leadership is incredibly important in any organization, but hiring the superintendent and approving the budget and contract are among the most important roles for the for the Board of Ed. If Superintendent Lodge chooses to retire or leave the district at the end of his contract, what characteristics would you look for in the next superintendent? And what concerns would you address in this hiring that you feel are not currently being met? And if I, that was kind of a long question, so I'll just read the last part. What characteristics would you look for in the next superintendent and what concerns would you address in this hiring that you feel are not currently being met? And again, we are starting with Susan.
So so again, I am a current Board of Education member. We hired, did a whole hiring process in two thousand one. And Steve became Superintendent Lodge became interim. And then we went through the process. There are a couple of different options. And, you know, I, so I guess thinking about that process, I want to make sure that we are doing equitable equitable hiring practices, just as we should with all of our our staff. And having, you know, it open to many people because we are an amazing school district and, you know, state known and nationally, you know, great, great district. And so I think we would definitely want to do that. I think as someone who has a big picture vision and that lines with our values and is data-driven, responsive to stakeholders, has a growth mindset. And and so I know we've gotten a lot of feedback from people. And that's been really great, something that Superintendent Lodge has done. I think now we need to take that and, you know, go beyond just the listening and put things into action. And so I would want somebody doing that, somebody who can hear feedback, hear from experts and, you know, be okay with that. And to move to move the district forward. So creating accountability is super important. Yeah, I can go on forever.
Thank you, Susan. Brad.
Alrighty. So I was once asked, like I was asked by a board colleague recently, like why I am such a big fan of Steve Lodge? And the answer for me, and I mean this is a tremendous compliment, is stability, right? Like, I really believe that Steve knows our schools, he knows our staff, he's in our schools constantly. He knows our students, they know who he is. I could tell you as a as a teacher how much that means to me. And in a class A school as large as ours, I'm not sure that's universal. He's humble, he's dedicated, you should see his Google Calendar and all the things he prioritizes and gets to. And and that was, he was doing that before he was even our superintendent. So I guess I haven't been ducking the question I've been answering as I go, what I'm looking for, or what I would be looking for as part of a team of seven would be, I'd be looking to continue that stability, right? I'm looking for a desire to understand the school experience for educators and students. I'm looking for connection. I'm looking for someone who wants to implement things like the bridge to stability to help individuals in our district connect with one another. I want someone who has the same goals as the ones we have. I like the goals we have about wanting to establish academic rigor and promoting a culture of equity and maximizing stability and unity and working towards, you know, our bright future because we have this incredible bond that the, you know, people of Celine have provided, right? So I'm looking for a superintendent would want to continue on those things. Couple of areas I'd like to see us improve on is I'd like our, one of the goals of our superintendent to continue to be, and it is now, that our hiring practices would reflect as closely as possible the diversity of our our student body. And then the other thing that's kind of on my mind right now is is some financial equity stuff. I I really want us to think about financial burden and, you know, our, you know, I want every kid to be able to go to Washington. I want every kid to be able to have the best helmet. I want every kid, you know, there's team fees and some of those kinds of things. That's something that's just a focus of mine right now, and I'd like to see improvement.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Thank you. So I was the president for Steve's first two years of his superintendency. So I have a pretty unique lens into into this question, I think. We learned together in a pandemic and we were always seeking the best outcomes for our students and staff. I truly believe that that he genuinely cares about them all. The hiring and the evaluation, plus the partnering with the superintendent is such an important role as a trustee. The superintendent is the operational head of the district. They are in charge of the culture, the accountability, the academic metrics and the success of the overall district in partnership with the Board of Education. It is essential that there is a positive working relationship, and I don't always mean agreeing about everything, but a positive working relationship and collaborative environment between the board and the superintendent. It's important that everyone understands their roles and responsibilities, where a trustee's role is more strategic and a superintendent's is more operational. I led the committee for the president, as president for the search for Steve. I'm very well versed in this process and ready to do it again. I know how to get stakeholders involved, I know to hire a firm and how to work with that firm and the rest of the Board of Education, and I know how to write the contract. I read hundreds and hundreds of email and replied to them all in support of them and understand what the community and what the staff want. I read hundreds of lines of data from surveys that we did at the time. And I didn't just read the the distilled data that were in presentations, I read every single line of data raw, so I could hear the voices of our taxpayers, our community members, our parents and our guardians. He's been pretty open on on plans in the next couple of years to think about retirement. I would of course welcome any discussions to stay longer, but I am very ready to act and plan. I think this is another reason I need to be on the board and have that consistency in leadership. Thanks.
Thank you. Kelly.
Thank you. I think transparency and constituent voice are really important in collaboration with board, the Board of Ed, in our supervision of the superintendent. But I I also think our new Human Resources Director and our staffs have been doing a really excellent job lately of mentoring a collaborative endeavor and process when we are hiring new staff. And also new admins, and a perfect example would be the hiring of our new Student Services Director. I think something that's important for a superintendent to to can to do in his service is to involve staff from the building level and the building team level as much as possible in the interview and hiring process. And I think it's really important to have a superintendent that has had a great breadth of experience, not only being an educator in the classroom, but also building administrator and also has the qualities of being transparent and collaborative. And all of that we have in our current superintendent, Dr. Lodge, absolutely. It will be a big, big hole, a big void, a big shoes to fill when when he chooses to retire. I think overall, I think involving your building teams and your teachers as much as possible in the hiring process when additional collaborative staff are coming in to join those teams is a really positive direction that we could be going with our current administrative team and also with anybody else who would come in as superintendent. Thanks.
Thank you. Sherry.
If Dr. Lodge retires or chooses to leave the district at the end of his contract, I would first seek an individual who is as vested in the district as he has demonstrated in his leadership. I sometimes want, does he, is he, does he work twenty-four seven? He has done a tremendous job of communicating with stakeholders in the district. He's approachable, he extends himself to listening to stakeholders and he personally reaches out like back out to individuals who contact him with questions and concerns. So if I were elected to the board and in this situation, I would want to seek an individual who shares all of those qualities. In terms of areas of concern, and these are just my concerns, they're not in any way implying that these are concerns about Dr. Lodge. It it would center on the aspect of inclusion from all stakeholders in the community, encouraging practices that aim to minimize polarizing actions in the classroom and beyond, and taking steps to ensure neutrality. In terms of district-wide committees, I'd like to see a broader range of representation of individuals of different thought and approaches to building bridges. In terms of potentially polarizing actions, I think there's an opportunity to continue to engage with groups in the community, such as the listening sessions that Dr. Lodge conducts. Continue to explore and issues that may be welcoming to some, but then alternatively offensive to others or exclusionary to others. And in reference to neutrality, I think the public school is a great place to learn about diversity and gain skills pertaining to cognitive empathy. But I think there may be an opportunity to reevaluate a practice created out of good intention that may be alternative to causing stress to others. But just more in chat.
Thank you. Darcy.
Thank you. So I see Superintendent Dr. Lodge intentionally seeking out various voices and perspectives that are different from his own, his own lived experiences and background before he draws conclusions or makes decisions. I see him consistently improving and collaborating more and more with families, and I would certainly miss his vision and leadership should he retire. We know that our Celine families want our students pre-K through young adult to have meaningful experiential and applied learning opportunities that will serve them well into their future. You know that we also want great teachers and staff who both encourage and challenge our students to be their best selves. So to that end, I think we want a superintendent who can effectively foster a collaborative, supportive and productive school culture that is one that provides positive outcomes for students at all ages and ability levels. The best teachers and staff and opportunities to partner with the community. I think any Celine superintendent should match those eight qualities that we seek in our students and on our compass. I think we need to have a concrete understanding of Celine's parental expectations, again with the Celine rigor. A shared vision that aligns with families in the district as a whole. Her active communication skills are a must, that invites collaboration and establishes trust with all parties. Experience as an education educator could be beneficial. But having said that, just because you're a good teacher or principal, doesn't mean that you're going to be a good fit for superintendent. But mostly we need someone who understands all aspects of the job, including academic standards, pedagogy, policy setting, addressing the challenging financial concerns of our district, human resources, and just simply being a leader who emphasizes success for all of our students.
Thank you, Darcy. And that concludes this question. We started that question with with Susan, concluded with Darcy. I'm going to move on to one more question before we turn it out to turn it to the community. So if you're out there and you have questions, be prepared to raise your hand, line up. And we'd love to hear from you after this particular question. And for this next question, we're going to start with Brad Gerby. School boards around the country have become ground zero for community conflict in recent years. Whether addressing mask mandates during the COVID outbreaks to DEI issues, dealing with hate speech, bathroom access and curriculum over the last few years. In general, what will be your strategies for dealing with conflict? More specifically, how will you address the enforcement of the non-discrimination policy? Ensure the respect for diversity, equity and inclusion, and also the individual freedom of students and staff to engage in the freedom of expression? I'm going to repeat that, the the more direct question part of this for everybody. So what will be your strategies for dealing with conflict? And how will you address the enforcement of the non-discrimination policy? Ensure the respect for diversity, equity and inclusion, and also the individual freedom of students and staff to engage in the freedom of expression. And Brad Gerby, you are up first.
Alrighty. So, you know, I admit that being a board member in two thousand twenty-one, it was really tough. You know, I felt like the team, our team kept kept working at it. It was imperfect, the world was imperfect. You know, but what I tried to do is I tried to communicate how I was making decisions to the public and then trying to be consistent about how I did that. And one of the things that I did was I sought out and desired expertise in in decision-makings, right? I sought out professionals, those were who are the closest to a decision and I asked them to advise me. And I think that was the best way to to go about that. Yeah, like climate has been interesting, right? We've had some things at the board table that have have come up. We've had some things at the board table that have come up. But one of the things that I want to thank the people of Celine for is that, you know, we've always ultimately been able to do our business, right? And I appreciate that, that we've always worked together to try to acknowledge that. You know, one of the things that I want to do is I think connection matters and I think it's important. And so one of the ways that I would address, you know, that is I think we need to care and listen. And just because I feel one way or the other, I mean, I will own and admit that I am certainly probably left of center. But the reality for me is that, you know, every student in our school district goes home and has conversations at their houses and about things that are important to them. And so I guess the biggest thing we can do is create an environment where those things, you know, feel like it's, they're equal. You know, there are students in our schools, they have diverse experiences, race, gender, identity, economic status, religion. We have to ensure our schools are a place for every student. So that's why I voted for some of the things that I've done. And, you know, we've been enforcing the policies. Our staff recently agreed to publish administrative guidelines to be more transparent. So I guess the bottom line for me is that all students deserve to feel safe and protected. And I'm 100% committed to it. 100%.
Thank you, Brad. Jennifer.
Yeah, these past six years, I've seen a lot, we've seen a lot and leading the team through that pandemic and being able to be that stable support and vice president for the past two years. Seen a lot. I think, you know, it's clear to say that we have a divided country and a divided district at times. But I recall when I stepped down from the presidency and became vice president, someone said to me, someone that might have slightly different views than my own personal views, said to me that I handled those years with grace. And I think that that meant a lot to me because at the end of the day, it's important that we model the way for students. We should be professional. We should be respectful and we should be fair. If we are good role models in partnership with our administration and our staff, then that will alleviate some of the concerns and the problems with non-discrimination policy, with issues of inclusion. I think it starts there and it starts at the top and we need to model that way. As a current member of the Policy Committee, I'm very aware of the procedure to edit, change and create policy. I know how to help achieve consensus if something needs to happen or needs to be enforced in a slightly different manner. I know how to take action. These are incredibly important issues. And to what I've heard my colleague just say, all students and staff should feel safe. No one should come into our buildings or be on our campuses and not know that they are, we are very happy to be there and that everyone in this community, whether you're a parent, guardian, a taxpayer, an uncle, a student, your opinions matter and are valued and you should be treated with respect. You should be listened to. And we should, again, model that as a community as well as a board. And yeah.
Thank you, Jennifer. Kelly.
Yeah, I think one of the most valuable skills that school boards can work on together to overcome adversity is working on collaboration and consensus building. But also look at practices and skills of mediation as well as restorative practices, not only as a board, but within our school community as a whole. I think we need to keep working on our DEI efforts, especially where it comes to making sure that everybody feels welcome and safe and included. We need to have a culture of anti-bullying and work, have a culture of mentoring our very youngest learners on accountability, but also social and emotional health and mental health and calling out each other when we are hurtful to one another, but also work on always going back to those efforts of DEI. And one of the most impactful persons in DEI work that I've encountered in my recent graduate work is the work of Eric Carter of Vanderbilt University. He extends the ideas of DEI into belonging and he has a rubric that are called the 10 Dimensions of Belonging, which I think are worthwhile endeavors for a learning community. I think overall, we need to work on eliminating ableism and we need to create a culture of accessibility and belonging in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Sherry.
Yes, so I think the conflict meter has gone up across the board in all areas of our lives, unfortunately. So from my perspective, it goes back to consistency and neutrality. In terms of the non-discrimination policy, it must be applied across the board consistently. If something is implemented as part of a non-discrimination policy for the benefit of one group, but yet it alternatively induces a perceived discrimination of another, then it's discriminatory. So we need to agree upon a provision to the other group. This is doable, if it's infrequent, but if it becomes many situations, then it's an unmanageable, you know, massive situation. So neutrality can play a role here if we can reach a place where we can all commit to valuing each other, respecting each other and wanting everyone to feel a sense of belonging in public school. I think the level of acceptance of each other must come from, with the maturity to accept that while in the public space, maybe it's most harmonious to omit some actions. And so an example I use is wearing perfume. So I like to wear perfume, but in my workplace, it's prohibited because it can induce ill effects in patients and coworkers. And so even though I like to wear it, I don't because it's a public space and then there's consequences if I do. So was that the first one or second?
That was the first.
Oh, okay. So, you know, I think if we value individual freedoms, so like me wearing perfume, more than say the person who's nauseated or by strong sense, then we have to be okay with creating provisions for individuals who do not want to be exposed to those things. So we have to create a workaround. And so if we have no limits on what is acceptable in the school, then we have to be okay with the other person, whether it's a parent or a student. This is again where I feel we have to commit to neutrality.
Thank you, Sherry. Darcy.
So the board's mandate is to create a safe and inclusive environment, just respectful of and productive for all of our diverse populations. And again, this comes back to creating policy like the hate speech or the bullying and harassment policy in partnership with Board Advisory as the DEI AC and Wellness Committee. And we should be continually evaluating these policies to make sure that they are in alignment with current laws and norms. And for that, we would rely on our legal experts, both through Ann Collins and Blaha, as was Neola, who consults on school board policy. Now, while I graduated with my law degree a number of years ago, I'm still very passionate about our First Amendment rights. I know that when it comes to public education, there has always been tension in balancing First Amendment rights and there will always be tension because we are complex, ever-evolving human beings and individualism is baked into our identities as Americans. As part of the Celine educational system, our mission is to equip our students with the knowledge, proficiency and skills necessary to succeed in an increasingly complex society. And that includes challenges and challenging moments. And tackling these challenging moments are a part of learning, growing and developing. On the other side of challenge is the opportunity to learn about ourselves, our family, our friends and classmates and our community, both past and present. And that prepares us to be successful in life and in life after school. The district's mandate in this is to foster the right conditions for educators and learners to be able to get discourse that allows for and even encourages free speech, free expression, critical thinking and more. When our teachers create those collaborative opportunities that are conducive to learning about our First Amendment rights, they are also creating practical life experiences and exercising those rights.
Thank you, Darcy. Susan.
I think it's getting dark here. So I, as someone elected to public office, it's important for me to represent my constituents. As the first LGBTQ member, board member to be elected to Celine area schools, I have been able to be a voice for those who have not had one, who haven't had a seat at the table when the district was making decisions about non-discrimination policies back in 2010, when I moved to the district and not being inclusive of gender, sexual orientation and gender identity. My, I have three children who are diverse, neurodiverse, who are racially diverse and are, we have a queer family. So some things that I worked on over the past six years have been introducing and drafting two very significant policies, brand new. The transgender and non-binary students policy and the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee policy. Both policies were passed unanimously. So when drafting the policy, we made sure to, it was important to involve parents of transgender and non-binary children. So those being, you know, impacted by the policy, LGBTQ students having their input. And so the board's DEI committee has advisory committee has made like been part of significant change in the district. They have made a three-year plan and a new three-year plan from 2020 and one now that we really need to look at and move forward with, which culturally responsive instruction, the hiring practices. And also, sorry, you know, we advocated for a DEI director, but now they're culturally responsive instructor. But, you know, we really need to listen to our advisory committees, respect what they're saying. Some of them are experts. That's why we chose them. We have staff, students, teachers and community members who are there. You know, I really think our board and district needs to take seriously this information that we are receiving when it's important for our staff and teachers to have the tools that they need to implement the policies. If you created a policy in 2021, it shouldn't take till 2024 to implement those, that policy. It's unacceptable. We do have administrative guidelines that have been put up recently. And so that's super helpful to give tools that people may need. I will always fight, always fight for those who are marginalized in our district, who are, you know, there's an equity gap in our district. Students with disabilities are, you know, being disciplined more and our black students, students of color, more than any students in our district. And that is unacceptable. We need to look at research, data, best practices and really, you know, implement the things that we say we're going to implement.
I think I missed, I think we missed a bell in here.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much, Susan. So that concludes the answers to this question. It's, we now have time to open up to the community, the questions that they may have. So if you want to use that, the hand raising feature, if you have questions and we can turn it over to you with questions you may have. If there are not questions, certainly I have additional questions that I could ask. So I'll give them, I'll give you all a moment to you know, hopefully this is not going to be like my classroom during the 2020, 2021 school year where, you know, getting in participation over Zoom was very challenging, you know, a lot of crickets. Okay. Well, I don't see any hands being raised, so I can move on to my next question. And again, after this question, if there are any questions, certainly happy to call on those people. With this question, we will be starting with Jennifer Steben. And this question deals with achievement. Many of the people watching and listening tonight are here because they want their child to achieve their best. Student math scores for the M-step are down well below where they were from the pre-pandemic levels. What would you advocate as a school board member to address this learning loss? In addition, what are your additional areas of focus or concern regarding student achievement in the district? Again, I'll restate the question part. What would you advocate as a school board member to address this math learning loss? In addition, what are your additional areas of focus or concerns regarding student achievement in the district? And we will start with Jennifer.
It's a big one. And first of all, let me just say, because I'm trying to think about in these questions, what aren't we saying that we want to say? And the first thing that I'm going to say is we are all talking a lot. And I truly believe as a trustee, I should be listening more than I'm talking and listening to subject matter experts on our staff on all of these questions. And I do talk to them frequently. And this was one question that I talked to several teachers, both at elementary and secondary about because it's important that we hear their voices and we also hear our families' voices. The first thing I want to do is acknowledge this statement about parents wanting the best because that is critical. I am a parent. I want the best for my kids too. I want the best for your kids as well. It's also critical to understand that we need to think about the whole child, but the schools do exist to educate as a first step and be, have those supports around, around the child. So I do not back off of accountability where metrics are concerned around academics. I work in high ed. I do it there. I do it in K-12 as well. Whether you're talking about a specific M-step math score or you're talking about NWA, EA, or you're talking about ACTs, SATs, AP scores, you need to look at everything and not just one particular flash in time. Because I could look at NWA in eighth grade from 2018 to 2022 and I could say we're up two points in reading. I could look at M-step for those same eighth graders, the same years and say we're six points higher on that. We're not higher in every place. Absolutely acknowledge that. But we're doing a lot of things that are right to get us on that pursuit of excellence and that path towards even improved grades and even improved well-being for the whole child. Just last month, we reported the highest AP pass rate in the state, 94%. I think we should acknowledge that and the hard work that our teachers and our staff in partnership with our families are doing. I think I had the bell at the 30 seconds, so.
That was the second bell.
Okay.
Thank you, Jennifer. Kelly.
Yes, I think we need to recognize the loss, not only of learning, but also acknowledge fully our mental health needs of everybody post-COVID. You know, not just our learners and students, but also staff, our community as a whole. There is even this concept going on called like COVID re-entry syndrome, if you will. I mean, everybody went home and sheltered in place basically, and then we're coming back and supposed to act as as if life never is different and it will never be the same post-COVID. So one of the things that I've seen really be instrumental for all student success, whether it was pre-COVID, during COVID or after COVID, is looking at the overall accessibility of learning. I think when staff is really skilled at using differentiated instruction and using all the instructional and assistive technologies that we have, you really start to layer on some of those skill sets that you would see in Universal Design for Learning or UDL. Anything that staff can do to look at making learning overall multisensory and using multiple modes of Multiple modes of response can really be helpful for all students, not just special ed students like my kids, but, but everyone. Um. So in general, we know that math scores are down, not only in our district, but they're down nationwide. Um, and equally concerning again is that um passion area I have for literacy and looking at. How can we help um advance literacy for not only students K twelve, but every citizen in America? Because it's such an essential life skill for uh vocational um opportunity, but also just. Um, being a part of community and um communicating your thoughts and desires. Um, so I think. You know, again, looking at accessibility and how that relates to um inclusion and belonging could be really effective. Um, along with um using um accessible and um tech technology um things in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Is uh, I'm just gonna, are we all hearing the bell? Okay. All right, um, I'll have Evan uh direct message me when they're, you know, when we're um. Can you, can you direct message me when we're at that point? Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Um, Sheri.
Yeah, so I've seen a highlighted fact, and it was mentioned here that um Celine students recent, who took the AP exam. Uh, recently had a passing rate in the top three percent of the state, and that's exceptional. Um. But, but for the benefit of other students in the district who are not in those courses or who experience continued learning loss. We need to ensure that we're providing the greatest amount of academic instruction time or academic minutes. And so. A standardized test score is one indicator that a student has met or has not met achievement standards. But there's other indicators that may respond favorably to early intervention and force correction plans. Rather than waiting for test results. So uh, you know, many of these indicators are visibly, visible and easily identified by teachers who are in the classroom every day. Um, but there may be other indicators that a student is not progressing. Which could be assessed for and identified earlier, which would allow for earlier and more robust intervention. And so as, as part of medical research, um, it's those unknown factors that scientists are assessing for and trying to. Uh, treat in hopes of gaining a favorable outcome. So if I were elected to the board. I would like to work with educators and administrators to really think about some of these challenges. Design systematic assessments to see if we could discover some unidentified factors. That might lead to substantial game changers in terms of educational content um delivery and learning.
Thank you, Sheri. Darcy.
So yeah, I'm very concerned about what the data has shown in regards to both math and reading. And as a trustee, we are ultimately responsible for effectively addressing the causes of any gaps that we see. And honoring all that we have to be grateful from for teachers, staff, admin, students and their families. We still need to acknowledge that those beneficial. COVID relations have either already ended or will end soon. We need to move beyond short term solutions to these long term problems. I think we need to continue implementing those strategies like the targeted interventions, SEL and MTSS supports. And professional development that provided most effect, that proved most effective and that we can still feasibly fund. To address absenteeism, you can't learn if you're not in school. Chronic absenteeism is a national trend post COVID. Schools are looking at investigating causes and potential solutions. And then Dr. Lott just noted that the district is giving more attention to this issue at the last board meeting. We also need to continue gathering data and staying current on research because of a large number of our students still need additional supports. Then we need to determine if changes should be made with the teaching and learning processes. I think communicating learning expectations to parents. So that they can mirror them at home allows parents to support their teachers and to support their students. And communicate with the teachers when their student needs help. Bottom line though, we have to do more with. Last night that we can work together as a district to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Darcy. Susan.
Yes, um, so I um. Yeah, this is, this is a lot to cover. Um, so I, you know, did some research um about the um numbers. Um, and on M step, um, you know, I think it's important um to keep in mind that we. Well, some of these others. Um, so looking at third grade math. Um, we are um up to seventy percent, which is the same or better than most pre COVID years. Um, that's in comparison with fifty percent for Washtenaw County and forty three percent uh statewide. Um, so we are seeing a um increase back um to where um with the pre COVID losses. Um, um, but you know, that's, that's obviously ta- taking some time and um we do need to, to um make efforts around. Um, you know, making um changes. Um, I. Do want to say um that because. I am an advocate, not only locally as a board member, but statewide and nationally. Um, I'm, I am so proud of the legislation and our governor um making our evaluations for teachers. Uh, forty, not forty percent of their evaluations um. Specifically on student growth, but twenty percent now on the evaluations. And so this allows our um teachers um to be able to focus on the whole student and not. Um, you know, teach to test or um because we, you know, really need to, to focus on the whole student. Um, you know, testing doesn't account for um, you know, critical thinking, uh communication. And we need to focus on who's been left behind um with socio socioeconomic status, students with disabilities.
Susan.
And talking about barriers. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Brad.
All right. Well, you know, first I, I want to own that uh, you know, COVID did have a, it had an impact on our students, on our scores and. You know, and if I could go back in time and, and stop a pandemic, that obviously I would. Um. It was an incredibly, it was a challenge to, to navigate and uh. You know, we had to do a lot of things for, to support our students as, as a whole and. And so those things were, were important to us and it took time and, 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 and we did that. Um. You know, one of the things that I would say we, I would advocate for the most is. I would say that our staff is really our professionals and our experts, right? And so. You know, when we put our students with our staff and we prioritize that and the time together and all of that, I think. I think we get a lot of bang for our buck and, you know, that's, that's definitely evident by our recent, you know, AP pass rates and what have you. Uh. Now, as a board member, uh, we get regular reports. We get regular parts from the. Teaching and learning team led by Karen Davis, and we have individuals who are MTSS certified and help us with that. And so that's Caroline Stout, Jen Nelson, as far as reading and literacy. And so. You know, my job as a board member is to be connecting with them and making sure that. Uh, we, we make sure that we're asking questions and making observations and what have you. Um. Now, I will tell you a couple of things that are pretty important. Literacy really important to me. Um, it is an essential life skill and. I think we, we had, we can't miss on that. Uh. You know, and you're correct with test scores that they're an area of opportunity, but um. I don't love chasing test scores, I will tell you. I wanna, I wanna, you know, chase instructional delivery, assessment. And then I want to trust Kara and her teaching and learning team to, to give it the appropriate focus and to report back to us. And those are the things that I'm going to do and I'm going to ask questions and I'm going to be engaged. And uh, I've done it for four years and I'm going to continue to do that.
Thank you. And Jennifer. Are we?
Um, you started with.
We started with, yes, I, yes, I, I knew I would screw that up on point. Um, thank you. Uh, thank you, Brad. Uh, well, thank you to everyone with answering that question. Um. And this is, the time has gone very quickly, um, and we are now ready to move into closing statements. And with a ninety minute uh candidate forum and having six candidates. It's obviously hard to hit on every issue that we would want to cover uh in a short span of time. Uh, so feel free, and you have two minutes in your closing statement. Uh, certainly feel free to summarize uh your priorities. Feel free to bring up issues that you would like to bring up. Um, but the time is yours uh for a closing statement. Um, and uh, and actually this works out perfectly because we get to start with Kelly.
Thank you. Um, I just want to foremost say I really enjoyed this event and getting to see. Um, my fellow candidates and get to know them a little bit better. Um. Again, I would, I would go back to my three pa- passion areas, which are DEI and creating a sense of belonging. Within a learning community and also literacy, I think, and of course math. As well, but literacy really being a fundamental life skill and what can we do across the lifespan and. Um, educational continuum for all students, no matter what their differences and abilities or disabilities may be. Maximizing those literacy skills as much as possible so that it is benefit to them across their lifespan. And I also really have a big passion for accessible instruction. Um, kind of Allah, universal design for learning. What are some ways we can layer on multisensory learning and make learning accessible to, to anyone, no matter what. Um, their walk of life or their ability is. Um, I guess I would just maybe touch on some of the previous um. Board type experience that I've had, if you will. Um, being a special ed parent um for over fifteen years. I've um served previously in Ann Arbor and also at the W I C on what's called a parent advisory committee. It's made up of parents and caregiver, caregivers of those with um special education needs. Um, to collaborate with the um, the learning environment um. For um maximizing student potential, um making sure that um those who do not have a voice have a voice at the table. Um, and I really feel uh just kind of ready to do. Even more to give back to the greater community, not just the special ed community, but um serve as a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Sheri.
Yeah, so what I would like to say, the most exciting. Thing about this opportunity, um, if I were elected to the school board would be. To try to bring some of the things that I've learned in my thirty nine, four year career in medicine to education. And so. And a lot of the transitions that we have made going from sort of a one size fits all. Treatment plan to a more individualized targeted therapy plan. Are all of the things that I feel I could translate to education and, and I, you know, I, I don't mean by I E Ps or, or anything like that, but. You know, twenty years ago, when you started to do this shift, it seemed insurmountable to, to treat every person as an individual rather than the mass. And we have made huge strides in medical outcomes as a result. And I think if, if given the opportunity. If I could bring all of the tools and skills that I've learned and how. We have developed policies and service delivery models um to public education, I really think that it could work. I think there's. Lots of research that we could do in terms of evaluating, teaching and learning and what, what brings us the best outcomes. Um, so if I'm, if I'm given the opportunity, I would work extraordinarily hard for you, listen to the community, listen to the staff and the teachers and. Um, I think I could, I could be a great um. Different perspective uh to. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sheri. Darcy.
Well, I'll quickly reiterate that my priorities are ensuring a safe, secure and welcoming educational environment for all. Improving student success along all metrics, uh attracting and retaining excellent teachers. Providing supports for struggling students and seeking and engaging with student, teacher, admin and family voices. All while maintaining a fiscally responsible budget. I would like to add though that as stewards of Celine area schools, I believe that trustees should really be reflecting those same proficiencies. That we want all of our students to demonstrate. Collaboration, communication, creativity and critical thinking. One of the reasons I'm running is that I believe there are better ways for the board to effectuate positive long term change. Great stewardship is built on collaborative peer to peer and partner to partner relationships. And on constructive communication with stakeholders. And I made this statement to the board a while back, and it's one I stand by now. All trustees represent all in our diverse community, whether they are LGBTQ, Black. And Asian, Hispanic, whether they are religious. Whether they were special ed services or more. As a community representative, I would seek to understand stakeholders' points of view, even if I personally philosophically, religiously. Or other don't necessarily agree. Because as a trustee, when challenges arise, I should be informed. I should be committed to listening. Seeking to understand and leading with grace and compassion to do what's best for everyone in our district and our community. But if we don't work to establish a starting point for success and at least pursue compromise when it aligns with our. Mission, vision and obligations to our students and stakeholders. Then we will never see that meaningful, long term successes we want for our children.
Thank you very much, Darcy. Susan.
Yes, um, so I've been honored to serve as um a board member for the past um almost six years. Um, I feel that I've brought a whole lot um over, over that, that time and. Um, need to con- continue to um, you know, um, to serve. Um, one of the things um that I really bring is transparency and accountability to the district. Um, I'm a big proponent of transparency. Um, I, you know, you can always count on me to ask tough questions at the board table. Um, and um ask for more data. Um, and you know, I feel that our uh community deserves to have. Um, the most transparent um information. Um. So uh, going over my priorities um with equity and inclusion during my term. Uh, we've made significant steps towards equity and inclusion. Um, again, feedback is so important. Um, and um, you know, we need to, to focus on that within equities that still exist for racial and ethnic minorities. LGBTQ students, students with disabilities. Um, I'll continue to push for policies and practices that support all students. Um, bullying and hate spe- bullying and hate speech. Um, the district has long had issues with bullying, hate speech. Um, we need to make sure our policies and handbooks are clear, transparent and consistent when it comes to non discrimination, bullying and harassment. Um, and we need to make sure that data is accurately recorded and reported to the board and the public. So we can measure prog- progress. The past two years, um, we have finally started doing um a bullying report. Um, and so that's been, been great. But again, uh, what's accurate, um, is everything consistent, um, student mental health. Um, so, uh, and staff mental health, it's great. Super important.
Thank you, Susan. Brad.
All right. Well, the first thing I want to say is I, I am incredibly grateful and thankful to have spent the last four years serving, serving kids, serving the. The people of Celine. So I want to make sure that I acknowledge that first and foremost. Um. I'm grateful for the connections I've made and with the, the, the things that I've been able to learn and, and, and I really do appreciate that. I'm grateful for the endorsement of the, the, the educators, the SCA and the, you know, the support staff of our school district. And I, I just, I, I really have, it's been my honor to, to, to serve and uh, I want to make sure I, I make that very clear. I think my uh abilities as, as a teacher, my uh, you know, hopeful experience as a, my, my experience as a treasurer, finance chair, as a parent. I think it makes me a diverse individual and I think I, you know, I think I have that boots on the ground. Knowledge of, of what, what's happening in our schools. Um, you know, for the last four years, I've, I've wanted to, to be uh of someone who is a bridge builder. And I, if you watched any of our meetings, I am somebody, it's not a mistake, folks, that I go out of my way to try to build and to be positive as much as I possibly can. And I, I want to do that, right? Because I think we have a lot of things to be excited about. Um. And I want to do those things and I want to do those things together with the people of Celine. You know, we got senior center updates and state of the art technologies, weight rooms, athletic enhancements, solar infrastructures. Classroom modernization, CTE things, uh, the operations center, HVAC and roof, you know, improvements. And so like, I just am thankful for everybody's. And so like, I just am thankful for, everybody's been on board for the last four years. I, I thank you. And, you know, if you want to, again, learn more and, and see more, uh, www dot vote gerby dot com. And uh, thank you, Celine. It has been a privilege and an honor.
Thank you. Uh, Jennifer.
All right, take us home. First of all, thank you to all of you because I've run before and I know how challenging this can be. So thank you to, to all of the other candidates. Um, I believe in learning, I believe in love, and I believe in leadership. I come from a family of public educators, my mother, my grandpa, my aunt. Um, I believe in public education and I work hard and will continue to work hard to build it up, both on the academic side, but also for the whole child and the opportunities that these students will have once they uh leave our doors. Um, I am honored to have the endorsement and have earned the trust of um the um the ESP and the SEA, our staff mean the world to me because they are our partners in this important work, not just with the endorsement now, but with the trust and the collaboration I've had with them over the years, particularly when hiring a superintendent. Um, I can be counted on for calm, empathetic, and knowledgeable leadership. Um, and I truly believe that my last six years on the board prove um, prove, prove my worth in this role and can stand as my interview for this position that I'm asking you for again. Um, and as a parent and a trustee, I am just very, very grateful to be able to raise our children in this wonderful community. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. And uh, we started with Kelly. So uh, that concludes um the question and answer session of the, of the candidate forum. Uh, I'd like to very much thank the school board candidates for furthering democracy by participating uh in an open exchange of ideas. This is incredibly important um for the political process to function normally. Um, and so I can hand it back off to uh, uh, to Eli. Uh, thank you very much, Evan, for uh doing a phenomenal job with the timekeeping tonight. That was very helpful to all of us. And I'd like to hand it back over to Eli. But uh, thank you to all of you for giving me the chance to participate and listen to uh all the great ideas uh that are out there.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Jason, for taking this on. Thank you, Evan, for the timekeeping. Uh, this was an extremely informative panel, and I trust it's going to be widely. I will, I will send the video link to you as soon as it. Thank you so much for participating and thank members of the audience also for taking, taking time to uh participate live. And with that, I'm going to say good evening. Have a good night.